That.
We can't get it.
It's what's so what's on my screen?
Hit this place I was.
Oh, fuckin', where's my cursor? There's my cursor.
Uh, go to duplicate slideshow, duplicate slideshow.
All right, good news is we have sound.
Okay, so, why is this?
Yeah, project.
Al, you any thoughts on that?
It has happened before, but I don't know.
Should I turn off, turn that on?
Wow.
No, that's not gonna do.
No, but you could disconnect and reconnect just from the TV. Wait a minute, your heart's on, didn't it?
Yes, it still went in to.
It wasn't connected earlier. All right.
Just, oh, sorry. I'm hungry, an eighty year old house would take.
I'm done. Okay.
And no, I don't need very much.
I could not get.
I can see him and share it.
I could not get to that earlier.
You're somewhere.
Medicare provider. It's really annoying. That everybody is so fine to.
I'm in a meeting, are you dying?
Okay.
Love you, bye.
Cutting right to the chase. That's nasty.
You can start, we'll figure this out. We're going to sharing.
The last term, okay, all right. I think we're good.
Now, six oh two, we will be opening our work session for December the tenth, twenty twenty four of the Savannah County Planning Commission. First order of business will be a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our work division tonight is our subdivision.
So I'll be presenting on this tonight. So as the blank mission knows. The board did approve the ordinance where world cluster subdivisions are no longer allowed by right and properties A one. So. We basically, the board talked about different options. And moving forward, a couple of the board members, Mr. Brian, Mr. Ross, talked about different options. And so we informed the board that the blank mission would be discussing it as their work session, talking about all the current options for subdivisions and o- options the planning commission could consider moving forward as the recommendations to support supervisor. So one option was roll cluster subdivisions could be allowed in A one by special use permit. That would require public hearing, blank question, board level. Um, as part of that, you could also have supplemental regulations where basically you could require a larger minimum lot size. For example, one acre or two acre lots. Uh, right now, there's some world cluster subdivisions that have lots as small as half an acre, some are three quarters of an acre. That's one option. Another option is you could limit the total number of billable lots, no matter the acreage, you can limit it to twenty five. Fifty watts. And then another option is you could require water and sewer connections for all billable lots right now, or previously you could have well accepted. Um, and a lot of the role cluster subdivisions in the county are on well accepted. So those are some of the options we came up with. So I guess we could discuss it each idea slide by slide, or we could go to the end and then come back, whatever. Blank wish prefers. Did you have a preference, Mr. Chair?
No, I don't have a, uh, yeah, I say the possibility we should talk about the, uh, special use permit possibility and, you know, consider that as one of the options.
On the next. So right now, minor subdivisions are allowed by right. And that's any division of property creating fewer than six lots, and it's not a family subdivision. So minor subdivisions are allowed by right and they won with administrative approval, so that doesn't come to the um, planning commissioner or the board. Uh, the minimum lot size is two acres. And so one option is we could increase the number of allowable lots for minor subdivision. Right now it's five. Prior to two thousand and four, it was actually, um, fifteen or fourteen lots, fifteen or more lots was a major subdivision. So one option is you could increase the number of lots for minor subdivision. So that, you know, if you had a hundred acre parcel, you could do fourteen lots, where right now you're just limited to, um, five watts. So that was one option we had discussed. So right now, major subdivisions are defined as the division of property into six or more lots and not a family subdivision. And also, if within the next five years, basically, you have to wait five years and then you can subdivide that parcel again. Um, into five lots again, that's actually on the agenda at night, actually getting rid of that provision, but currently indicated. If you have a parcel, you could divide it into five lots, it could be a minor subdivision. And then you can wait five years and then divide those lots again into five lots again, as long as it meets the minimum lot size. And so, uh, right now, if you do that within five years, it's considered a major subdivision, which is not allowed. So right now, major subdivisions aren't allowed anywhere in the county. Uh, rural cluster subdivisions were major subdivisions. Um, but currently there aren't any major subdivisions allowed as a by right use. And so one option is you could allow major subdivisions by special use permit. Um, and that was one of the options that was discussed by a couple of members of the board at the last meeting. So I just want to go over the proposed changes to the major subdivision definition that on the agenda tonight, that's where it goes back to looking at the parent track. So basically, um, instead of having new division rights every five years, your division rights are based on the parent track. Instead, the parent track is determined as of January twenty second, twenty twenty five, which is tentative typically when the board would approve this ordinance. And so currently you have division rights every five years, this would stop that process because actually there's a case out of Orange County, a circuit court case that says you can't um, require phasing of subdivisions. So, and that was, I think, two thousand and twelve, so that would bring or could into conformity with that circuit court decision. So now our option is family subdivisions, which is basically you're dividing the parcel off for, um, basically your immediate family, spouse, sibling, grandchild, grandparent. Parent and so family subdivisions are allowed by right. And really the only restriction on the minor subdivisions of family subdivisions is once you have over five watts, it has to be a public road. So five lots and under, it can be a private road, but over five lots, it has to be a public road brought up to meet the standards. So that's the big limitation on family subdivisions and minor subdivisions. So large lot subdivisions, that's actually where, so if it's over sixty acres, if you're dividing your three hundred acre parcel into five sixty acre lots, that's actually not even considered a subdivision, it's just allowed by right. Um, planning doesn't even review it, you just go and record your plot at the courthouse. So that's kind of, it, it's interesting because, um, prior to two thousand and four, the acreage was actually ten acres. So you, if you had a hundred acre parcel, you could have done ten, ten acre lots without going, uh, to the subdivision agent. But right now it's sixty acres and, uh, which doesn't require going to the subdivision agent, anything less than that, then it is considered a subdivision. So one option is you could reduce the acreage required, basically, um, go back to prior to two thousand and four standards or somewhere in between where it wouldn't be considered subdivision, and that would allow someone uh, who has, you know, a five hundred acre parcel to have more than five division rights. So the other option is rezoning, you know, parcels in A one could be rezoned to R one, R two, or four, which allows for the cluster developments by right, and R three, which allows for the compact residential development. Uh, or the planning development, which is in designs crossroads CPA. So advantage of the reasoning is you can have voluntary proffers such as architectural proffers and also proffers for the public facilities such as transportation, public safety, schools, parks. So with, um, especially use permit, um, proffers are not allowed.
I thought it was the other way around.
No, proffers are only with resanings.
Oh, is it the, so? When we talk prob, those are the siding agreements, right?
That's similar to, this is different, siding agreements only with solar.
Yeah.
But similar, works similar to a proffer.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, but for residential development, the only way you can have proffers is through rezoning. So I guess if anyone want to go back to any slides and kind of discuss different options, or if anyone had any other ideas, um, moving forward.
Hold it. Minor and the major, would that be a good option to reboot, do both of those in conjunction? So that possibly in major, that you could do more in minor and more in major to a certain extent, but they would still have to come before the planning commission and the, uh, board supervisor.
So right now, minor subdivisions don't require planning commission approval. But you could say over so many lots, um, could require, um, planning commission approval, or you could call that a major subdivision, and major subdivision would require planning commission board approval. So what's interesting right now, what's happening is if someone has, you know, two twenty acre lots, what they could do, they're, um, next to each other, adjacent, they could do a boundary adjustment first. Kind of get the layout how they want, then divide each one into five to get the best frontage and the best layout. So, but they're limited to basically, you know, five, two acre lots, it has to be a minimum of two acres. Um, so yeah, if you had a major subdivision where you said, okay, a major subdivision is six or more and it's requires a special use permit. Or you could say, no, minor subdivision, we want to allow ten or fifteen lots by minor subdivision, that's by right, that's just approved by the subdivision agent. So those are both options, especially, um, you know, for larger parcels, you know, you would be, you could have more than five division rights. Um, if you had like a eighty, hundred acre parcel, right now you, you only have five division rights, which is fairly limiting. Um, especially if you want to do, you know, ten acre parcels.
So in other words, what if, if I had a hundred acres, I could divide it off into twenty acre parcels to make each one the parcel separate and do, uh, in each one.
Right now you can, but there's, um, I mean, for the blank mission tonight is a provision to get rid of that. Where basically you can only divide it once.
But what if it's, it, it's, uh, listed in the county as separate pieces of property?
Right now, if it's, right now, the separate pieces of par property, then you're fine.
Yeah.
Because the parent parcel date would be as of January twenty second. So if you have, you know, five, ten acre parcels on next to each other, you would have, you know, five division rights to be in each of those, but you still have the minimum two acre requirement.
Okay.
And you still have, you know, the road frontage requirement and.
Right, and well, it'd be a major road if it's over certain amount.
It's over five.
Five, a five unit. That has to be what, fifty foot wide?
Fifty foot right away, yes. All right, with the minor subdivision, any other requirements of, probably there's the frontage.
Frontage setbacks, um.
Backs.
As far as designing the subdivision ones, I think that's.
Yeah, we don't have a length, some counties have a length width ratio requirement, like where you can't have these long skinny lots, we can't have flag lots. We don't have any requirements on that, so you can do whatever shape, really, if you want as long as you're being.
Don't should be permanent, sure, let's, yeah.
No.
So the minimum acreage for major and minor is two?
Two acres. Maybe one, correct?
Maybe one.
And we have a difference in road frontage, you know, certain roads in the county.
That's right, um. You're looking that up, I'm, I'm gonna try to do this by memory for.
It's five hundred for about fifteen, fifty-three, six, two fifty, and six sixteen.
Right.
And then three hundred for public.
For all of the B dot secondary roads and then two hundred for private roads.
It used to be two hundred on the regular roads at one time, we changed that to three hundred.
So can I ask Mr. Go a question? What was the ideas coming out of the board supervisors in regards to this? Just curious.
You mean at the, at the, at the meeting? Um, well, there was a, a motion to, um, basically have you all take a look at the major subdivision, um, as to be allowed by special use permit. Um, I'm sure that will come up again, but it, it was a new business motion, it did not pass, I'm not saying it won't pass. Uh, Mr. Hodge made the motion, Mr. O'Brien seconded it. Mr. Hodge indicated that he would be bringing it back up, um, and so, you know, I think that was basically the gist of it. Um, and, um, you know, it wasn't, wasn't much to, I mean, there was a larger discussion over, over the, the zoning decision that was made, that was kind of a new business thing that, I mean, it may have been a, a two minute discussion there. Um, but I think the three that voted against it, including myself, um, were at the time that we made the decision, we made on the, on the, um, on the subdivision, we just felt that that was kind of a, the, the three of us at least felt that that was kind of a quick turnaround to have done away with the world clusters by right and then turn around and immediately look at major subdivisions as a possible avenue for special use permit, kind of take a step back, look at some things, um, and I'm not saying that I, I, I wasn't at the time. Uh, I, I basically said I, I wasn't ready to, to do that at, at that time. Um, I'm not saying that I would or I wouldn't later on down the road. Uh, to be quite honest, uh, you know, I need to look a little bit more into this and, and that's why I was um, looking forward to, to, to the discussions we were having on some of these things this evening was to, but at this time, we, three of us at least felt like it was just way too quick of a turnaround, um, to do that, so I don't know if that answered your question or not.
It does.
Wasn't, uh, the person made the motion, were they concerned about affordable housing more than anything else? Because of not long over having the cluster subdivisions?
No, I don't think that was, uh, I don't want to speak for Mr. Hodge, um, you know, but it doesn't. I don't think that affordable housing was his reason for wanting to visit this, I don't think. And could you get affordable house, when I think affordable housing, I think more colonial circle type thing, not necessarily, you know. I guess, um, what are some of the major subdivisions that we have in the county, um, Broken Island?
Um, then you have, um, Keswick South.
Yeah, Meadowbrook. So those were all put in before two thousand?
Well, Meadowbrook's worldbuster.
That's a worldbuster, that's right, thank you.
I think Derek's your subdivision, major subdivision, was it Cross Creek?
So what would hunters like be, that subdivision?
I don't know.
But they're like ten acre lots.
It's ten acres that it would just. Well, remember that would have been considered a by right outside the subdivision. If there are ten acre lots, you went around outside of the subdivision ordinance back then, back prior to the four. You could do as many ten acre lots as you wanted by right, so if you look at like Keswick South, all those lots are ten acres.
Yeah, so I mean, I wouldn't say that I would have called. Obviously, there are people can, who can afford to live in those subdivisions, I, I wouldn't call that necessarily uh, affordable in the sense of how we think about affordable housing, so I don't. To your point, I don't want to speak for Mr. Hodge, but I, I don't, I don't think, given, given the fact that what goes into those major subdivisions, how, how the, the parcels are bigger, that that would be considered something that would attack affordable housing necessarily with the same vigor that other things would.
And are these minor and major based on acreage size? I really don't know, so is a thirty acre piece of land that could, is that considered minor or major if it was to be in a subdivision?
Well, it would just be the number of lots determines if it's minor or major, so if it's five lots, it's minor, if it's more than that, it's a major.
But right now the option that they could do both, they could do.
They can't do major right now.
Okay, so no fifteen, two acre lots.
The most you can do is.
Five, five, six acre.
Unless you're resent. So that's the big limitation, if you have eighty, ninety acres, all you can do is five lots. And then you have right now, you wait five years, then you can subdivide again.
But you said there was a law to the about that, therefore that's been changed, we need to change our.
That's why.
So. Say that again, so basically, right now, you have eighty, ninety acres, which means you know is five lots. And then after five years, you can subdivide it again, what is the?
See, that's what our code says right now, but there's, uh, ordinance tonight for public hearing, where basically we would get rid of that five year waiting period where that would no longer be allowed because of that circuit court case. And you would just look at the parent parcel day, and that would determine your division rights.
So get rid of the five years, meaning you can't do anymore there?
Correct, once you do your five lots, you're, you're done.
Okay, so we're getting rid of the, 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 the litigation is basically saying that I, I'm, I'm trying to articulate this.
You can't re-subdivide.
Right, you can't re-subdivide, not meaning you, not meaning our five year restriction, it's going to be less, it's going to be more restrictive, right?
Because they, you can't require phasing.
Right.
You can't require that the next phase your subdivision's five years out, and that, you can't require, basically with the case set.
So back to the one about, uh, clusters with an SUP and the possibility of changing the, uh, acreage or whatever required per, per lot. That option, is that something that, um, other people have talked about, is that anything similar to that done anywhere else?
Um, so other localities allow, um, cluster developments, but not, I don't think we saw any localities required, maybe that allowed. This is something we just kind of came up with, is an option, I don't think we actually saw any other localities that allowed this, especially this.
I don't know how we could really require water and sewer connection because of the fact that this not water and sewer is only available in very small, limited, uh, areas of the county at this time, um.
Which of the current rezoning options would not require central water and sewer, and you could do well?
So that was the R four and R three. But R four was different, um, minimal lot size and different frontage requirements, if you didn't have, you had well accepted. That R one and R two require water, well, and sewer.
And what is the open space allowable or requirement in those, uh, on the R two and R four, or clusters?
Yeah. I want to say fifty percent, but.
Right.
I feel better, you can double check that.
Yeah.
Those are in the cluster now, we have to have seventy-five percent open space.
Correct. What was the question?
I was asking what the requirements were for open space. I recognize that, um, there's difficulties associated with by right cluster development, but I'd hate to see us lose the open space retention benefits.
Are you, are you mean, what are the open space requirements in those, those R districts? Is that what?
R districts or through special use permit.
R four for cluster developments, fifty percent.
Yeah.
And you're allowed two point nine dwellings, uh, per acre. Let's see.
So R two is also fifty percent, and you're allowed two dwellings per acre.
So originally in the cluster division, if you had a hundred acres, you had to divide that by two to come up with fifty was the matter of fact, the maximum, but then you had to take out roads and so forth, then you had to have the seventy-five percent.
Send it back to the ground.
So R one, it's fifty percent and one dwelling per acre.
How hard would it be to go to let the cluster, uh, with an SUP and go to maybe larger, uh, lot sizes and uh, maybe like go to say like fifty percent open space like somebody does?
Yeah, you could do that, um, you get a larger lot size, or you, if you wanted to limit the number of lots, you could keep it at seventy-five percent and still have a larger lot size.
Would that require a ZTA?
Uh, that'd be a SUP. Oh, you'd have to ordinance first to change the code, and then you would require an SUP.
An ordinance to change what the code, the, the language in the resident, R one, R one?
A, A one. If you want to allow roll clusters in A one by SUP. So the advantage of that, then you would have community meetings, you know, then you would have more public input, you'd have two public hearings, like mission board. So there'd be a lot more public involvement, and you could have, uh, you know, we could have some law regulations dealing with lot size, we could, you could always have amenities, you could say certain amenities are required. You know, a top lot, and I saw colonial circle, they have a top lot, they have a, a field, super field.
But didn't you say that some of those could occur with the rezoning proffers, voluntary rezoning proffers as well?
Yes, I did, I drove through colonial circle yesterday, I've been there a while. And, you know, that was proper, basically, to have the top lot in the field and the walking trail and sidewalk, you know. So with a rezoning, you can get all those amenities as well.
So what would be the point of, if, if you could re-go back a couple of slides, Sir Fortune?
Sure, which one do I see?
Think it was back? Or maybe it was forward, the ones with the, the, the Rs, R one, R two, R three.
Yeah, one of the two second.
So you're saying you could, someone could rezone to R four, which would allow roll clusterman, roll, roll cluster developments by right. You're effectively getting the community meeting, you're getting the opportunity with voluntary proffers and get those same things that you would be if you made it a special use permit in A one. So if that allows for the exact same thing, wouldn't it be superfluous to look at doing something as a special use permit that accomplishes the same goals when we already have an avenue for that?
It, I guess the advantage, I mean, you can have more open space in a roll cluster, and the goal of a roll cluster is to have more open space, we could have the seventy-five percent where R four is only fifty percent. I guess that'd be one advantage with a roll cluster.
And I have to say, um, the point of view of natural resource conservation, including wildlife benefits. You really need big spaces of open space to support that, you really do. You talk about twenty acres or five acres or whatever it is in colonial circle of amenities, that's really not open space. It, and I, I again do recognize there were significant problems with the way that the state structured this all those years ago. But the intent was to preserve farmland and open spaces, including for wildlife benefits and natural resource protection. As well as recreation.
With, with the rezoning, the proffers have to be voluntary, but with the special use permit, we can put conditions on special use permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if R four also the minimum lot size is two acres, if you don't have water and sewer. So you do have that limitation as well, two acre minimum, so a world cluster, you could have, you know, an acre. Um, then a lot size, you know, if you want to, and keep that in space, larger open space.
So are the, are the, are the, are the roll cluster? I don't understand, are the roll cluster I guess requirements that were by right in A one, if you rezone to R four and, and, and your intent was to do a world cluster development? And that was, your R four was your route to do the world cluster development? Would those be the same requirements and stipulations that were previously under the by right usage in A one?
No, the cluster development, you have to have water and sewer. Cluster development in R four.
But that was not a requirement in the by right?
No, all, pretty much all the world clusters well accepted, yeah.
So couldn't you effectively tweak R four to make it more like what we would want to accomplish with the world cluster there, if, if a world cluster was the intent, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand. If we've got an avenue now, instead of creating another avenue, why wouldn't we tweak that avenue? You've still got the public input, if a developer really wants to do a world cluster, they can submit to rezone to R four. If we do a ZTA that makes it so that some of the concerns of Miss Gilpatrick is outlined here are, are addressed by the world cluster clause in there, you've created that route without creating all these additional avenues that people would have to go through, I mean.
But wouldn't it be better to have more control by the planning commission and the? And the uh board supervisors than you would by allowing it by right? And and so forth like.
Well, you're allowing it by right following a rezoning. So there is oversight there, and there is. Avenues for those voluntary proppers. And unless I've misunderstood, Mr. Witt, it sounds like. A lot of the, a lot of the things that you would achieve with a special use permit, you could achieve through the rezoning as well.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I guess you could make the argument that. The voluntary proppers would be necessary to get the approval.
Right.
But then you start bumping up against. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Witt, try to pump up against how voluntary that really was. Whereas the special use permit allows us to say, you'll do this.
Well, that's what I asked, and you said that that you had more room to actually, and that's that's kind of why I was like, well, I thought it was the opposite.
Well, the proppers are more, you know, negotiating. Right? We want to see. These kind of houses, minimum square footage, brick to gray. We want to see, you know, different roof lines, different materials, right? We don't want to see vinyl. Then they proffer that. And and you kind of show your guidelines is what we'd like to see of this development. Or like this, this school is, um, you know, would be over capacity. Let's say central elementary. This school would be over capacity. So we need, here's a proffer say that shows, here's how much a kid, here's how much a kid costs. We'd like to see. You know, this amount to go towards schools because this school is over capacity. So it's more negotiation.
And that could be done through the rezoning process?
Correct.
But didn't the state made the proffer more restrictive than what we could really negotiate?
Did five years ago, but now they've reverted to make it easier. Because basically it stopped all proppers. So like two thousand nineteen, they made it very restrictive. And then now they've made it a lot less restrictive. Um, in the past two, three years, so it's made it easier to kind of go back. Um, as long as it's voluntary. I mean, you can't say, we're denying this rezoning because you didn't give us. That five thousand dollars per unit. As long as you're not denying a rezoning because of, they didn't give you the proffer you wanted. Um, you just had, you'd have to have that voluntary element.
But with an S U P, uh, we can make requirements, right?
You have conditions as long as they're related to um health, safety, welfare. Now, it'd be harder to say, hey, we want minimum two thousand square foot houses. That'd be harder to do that kind of condition with an S U P. That'd be the advantage of rezoning. Is then you can have more architectural uh requirements with a rezoning.
Well, it sounds to me like the 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 ability to negotiate proppers by. Or discuss them by the planning commission and negotiate them by the board. Sounds to me like. There is a far more um. Trying to think of the right term here. We have far more ability to do that than we had been led to believe previously. By previous, by, you know, so, you know, my understanding was that basically it kind of had to be. You had to be very, very particular about how you went about those. Um. But it sounds to me like you can pretty much negotiate what you need to negotiate through the rezoning process.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing is you only want, you know, the department had negotiating proppers. You don't want a planner negotiating. Right, sure, it's the county attorney and planning director involved in all the discussions. So there's no misinformation given.
So it says that we rezoning would allow for voluntary proppers. So if you suggested something and they didn't volunteer to do it. Then uh could we deny for that reason?
No, you can't deny it because they didn't offer the proffer. But you you'd have to give other reasons related to health, safety, welfare while you're denying it. And so you might not. Um, like before I came here, I was involved in a rezoning to a townhouse district. In Prince George County, so we were negotiating, you know, the cash proffer toward the schools because the schools would be over capacity. And so really, there's, you know, we didn't get the amount initially that we desired based on the study. But, you know, so it's just negotiation. Um, you know, they know the amount of cost to educate a child, or you're telling the developer, but they're not usually giving you the full amount.
So then what would be, what would be a a rationale for for denying that once it came in under what you asked for? You could, you just say that it would be so, put too much pressure on our schools to.
Well, no, the rationale would be, you know, the neighborhood next door did not want to see. Um, this rezoning, you know, it would ruin the nature of this, you know. We put too much burden on the roads, too much burden on the schools. You know, too much burden on services. You just have to have other reasons. As part of denial. You just can't, you can't refer back to the proffer, the reason why. You denied it. That's where you get in trouble is when you specifically reference. Hey, we wanted ten thousand per unit. You only offered a six, so we're not actually denied that.
You could still rationalize, in your case with Prince George, you could still rationalize this would put too much pressure on public services to include our school system.
If they, if, I mean, the board ended up approving it, but yeah, if they wanted to deny it. They would just have to come up with other reasons why it wasn't a good fit. For that area, why picking up land, why it wasn't a good use. That property.
Do we have any undeveloped land that is in your? Any undeveloped land that's our zoning?
That I'd have to work, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, there's not many lots like like Marcella. I mean. Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. We'd have to research that to say.
Yeah, um. I know we've been kind of looking at undeveloped, Arsen's County, why, but that's. Then those are broken out by Heather's zone. Um, so we'd have to research that further.
Could you look at R three as well?
See, R three is a little bit different. That's where you have a master plan. Colonial Circle is R three, correct?
Yes.
And so we have, you know, a cloud master plan. So basically, it's really designed for water and sewer. Does not require, but really that was the intention when the district was created, just to have water and sewer. When you look at the regulations.
Uh, planning department, you come up with some. Concrete ideas for uh the parts that they want to go to the R one, R two, R four. Like we've discussed tonight, so that we could actually. Have an idea and and the fact that, well, that we would might want to think that there's some changes could be made.
Yeah, we're looking to see possible tweaks, especially the R three and R four.
Well, I would think about the R four with the fact that what they. The thing about the water.
Yeah, R four would be the best issue to tweak.
If it was, if it was an area where water and sewer was available, could we put, put it so it would be required if it if it's available? And not if it's in an area not required.
Yeah, I mean, you could have like, you know, designated growth area, C P A areas.
And if the intent was a rural cluster, and then we were to tweak these things, it got it more to to. What some of the folks here have mentioned, more like what it was by right in A one. If we got. We got to that point, you know, R four, I mean, they could. Potentially, if if a rural cluster was the the true intent, I mean. When you're talking voluntary proppers, I mean, they could proffer out other things and just it would, it would essentially allow for just a rural cluster there that, you know.
With the open space. As much as possible.
I mean, I was saying, you can get, we'd like to see the open space on the outside, not the middle, you know. You negotiate that, you you negotiate. We want to see, you know, a hundred foot buffer around the whole property. Yeah, there's a lot more negotiation you can do with a rezoning, I would say.
In open spaces in these are, like you say, R four. You wouldn't be able to, like in rural cluster now, they could put one unit in that open space. In this R four, that would not be possible, right?
Correct, you'd have to stay permanent open space.
Okay.
So Colonial Circle was rezoned to R three, and then the by right. The rural cluster use was used to. Because Colonial Circle is a rural cluster, right?
No, it's it's not.
So I I I thought it was mentioned this evening that it was, and and. Believe it was mentioned at the board meeting that it was as well. I didn't think it was.
It was, it's not. I I saw that on the front page of the paper. I'm not sure where.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got the impression it was a rural cluster, that those were exactly.
Yeah, I didn't think it was until I heard that floated and then saw that in the paper, and then I was like, well. It's not very.
So basically, the way R three works, your density is two point nine acre residential units per acre. But by S U P, you can get between three and ten units per.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah. And that's what we don't like, bring a point when they're trying to increase the density. But I don't, I, Colonial Circle has S U P, right?
I don't remember how many dwellings per acre. I was just.
So they had to get S U P for that increased density. That's what they did instead of clustered about.
Well, and that's, yeah, and that's another, another, I think, better than the cap of maybe tweaking the R four to R, R three to make the avenue. Or excuse me, the R four um to make the the avenue for the rural cluster is because. You know, you've got these density requirements, and if you, if they want to rezone and go up from what's already there, you have to get a special use permit to go up from what's already there. And you have this opportunity to make, to negotiate the voluntary proppers to to accomplish what, you know, the rural cluster is the true intent. And then if they want to increase the density, you have the 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 oversight in the special use permit process as well.
Yeah, so right now on R four, you can have a density of. Two point nine units per acre if you have water and sewer. So you could have. Let's see, the density, and that's two acres if you don't have. You said well and septic. But yeah, you could change that, like you could allow greater density by S U P in R four. That's a possibility, even a well and septic. So like right now, like minimum frontage. You don't have well and septic's two hundred feet, so that's a pretty wide lot. So you could always change that and have different frontage by S U P, for instance. It's often now what you see in rezonings in other localities is they're constantly waiving the frontage requirement. Waiving setback requirements. It's amazing. The list of waivers you'll see for these things in other localities. They say, you know, if you're doing it a waiver every time, it makes more sense to just allow it in your ordinance by S U P or by right.
I think I'll need to, um. Planning and yourself need to come up with some concrete ideas um where we could actually look at. Uh, to make sure that we see what we wanted accomplished when we took out the rural cluster. Because we could not have. Uh, community meetings, uh, was no input from the counties. We basically had to approve them. Uh, and and we couldn't, you know. We had no look at all the people in the county, not for me, but for the people in the county.
I agree with you.
You can work on that.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons, when you have the community meetings, you know, you're meeting with the developer. And that's when the proppers start evolving. And because they see what the communities, this all come out to that public hearing, what they want to see. So you'll see that, you know, site plan of those proppers evolve, as they get closer to plan, especially when you have this community meetings.
If I'm not mistaken, in the last comp plan revision. Exercise, I kind of audited the land preservation group while serving on the historic preservation. They were very much in favor of uh generous open space and. Not the kind where you encircle a development, but think very consciously of it being. A contiguous area which actually had some public benefit associated with it. You're circling, I think it works against that. Those uses as well as wildlife corridors. Because it puts, it puts the open space too close to to houses. Or residential units.
Yeah, we we have a huge focus and discussion on the roofs. But we got to also keep in mind that the roofs are going to have to support economic development and and more of a mixed use. Concept. Preserves the land e- even more by doing that mixed use concept. To where, you know, you you live and work in the neighborhood that that you. You know, that that's, that's the way things are going.
Sure.
Yeah, well, I think, I I think you made a good point. I think you have to look at the. CPAs, you know, community planning areas, when you're looking at those, is where, where can the economic growth be? Where will it be?
Right.
And. Kind of plan from there moving forward, you know. I know we talk about Zion Crossroads a lot. I mean, that's, you know. Uh, the 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 most, you know, opportunistic CPA that we have right now. And um, you know, if if if. To your point, I mean, I think that that should. If those things go hand in hand, it should kind of guide where those things, where those things go, and to have oversight of that, you can't just keep. Flopping up things in certain parts of the county that don't have this and probably won't have this economic development because it is completely rural. And expect not to put pressure and have people commuting to work outside of Savannah and things like that.
Live and work environments. Live and work environments. I think you can achieve both. With the right design and mix.
Well, we got the rezoning right there off of Lake Marcella Road that we rezoned for commercial. I think you were in that with us. And now it's sitting idle because they couldn't get the businesses that they had promised.
It's what I said.
Yeah, and and if if we had, you know, some residential mixed in there, I mean, it it. Kind of synergistic effect of creating those businesses to go along with it, is is what we need to start looking at.
And the problem is, is that where that was rezoned is the most densely populated part of the county where people. Are complaining about overgrowth already. So if we don't have what we need there to get that then, then you have to look at.
Yep.
Places that are adjacent to or close by that would be able to support those things and um.
I kind of agree. Zion Crossroads is one of those places. I mean. We've got a big block land sitting there now with no use. Was supposed to be industrial, but it could have been industrial and something else mixed use. And maybe something would be there, and now it's sitting there idle.
Well, I made a suggestion, Mr. Fortune, I talked to him on the phone the other day. Uh, when there was a suggestion for one of the committees to be uh housing. I made a suggestion that we should probably combine housing and economic development into one committee. So that we get to combine that, look into what we need is. From economic development to go along with health. I don't know whether other people agree with that or not with that, but you know, we've talked about it many times that. We need to try to figure out how to balance our economic development with that housing.
Sounds good. Maybe we have a marching orders.
So anything else we need to discuss? If not, I'll I'll adjourn this until seven o'clock. We need to give anybody who needs a short break to take care of any business they need to take care of. We'll end the work session at six forty eight, and we will reconvene a regular session at seven o'clock.